I call for the Monday, June seventeen point four, uh, Board of Aldermen and Regent. Um, roll call please.
From the county, from the Necker.
Thank you. In just, I, we start your presentation, so that'll be.
Me, alright, listen. Hi, everybody, um, this is my eighth and final year of being your state representative. I come every June to all my school boards and city councils, kind of give you a year and update on where we're at in the state and how we affect the city. Uh, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, we didn't get much done in Jeff City, you know, this year, we passed very few bills. Uh, I like to say, we did a lot of good in the House, we're to go die in the Senate, so, you know, it is what it is. We passed about fifty billion dollar budget, will probably be called back in special session in September to adjust that. Uh, you know, basically, the, the spending to me is still out of control, we need to get it under control. It's, it's, it's just, I pay many years ago, we had a twenty-seven billion dollar budget. But you factor in all the ARPA and the COVID money and all that extra one-time money, it's all going away and we can't get used to that money. So, for you all specifically, several years ago, some of you all are new, but I think most of you all may remember, I helped pass a law to you all to get your half-ten public safety sales tax. Um, I, every year, I look up and you all still have money, and I don't know if you can say over fifty dollars Missouri state treasure unclaimed property or is this new additional money? So, I'm gonna leave a letter, uh, it's still due just call, uh, I'm the official ambassador for unclaimed property for the last three treasurers. I've returned millions of dollars to thousands of people. I do this as a hobby, because I type a hundred words a minute and I'm a speed reader. So, every year, I bring you all one American flag and one state flag, but because I'm going out of office and I have a surplus, you all get two this year. So, anyway, um, are there any questions or anything I can do? I had a re-conversation with your chief last week and I am gonna definitely check, I, I've been straight to Sandra Parkstead to her face, uh, to see if we might be able to get your police department some money, any grants or any extra money out there just floating around. Um, I did write letters of support and help get the Boone County Sheriff a ton of money for a training center and for a, a huge daycare facility for, uh, emergency personnel. So, um, you know, not, it, I, I, like I say, I'm going out, but I'm just telling the truth. We're a Republican supermajority and if you want something done, you have to go to a Republican to get it done. That's all there is to it. So, um, uh, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve you all. Uh, half of my family tree is from Centralia, the other half is from Hallsville, so my roots go very deep here. And unfortunately, during our eighty mile an hour share win Thursday night, Centralia and Hallsville signs did not go off. And we are in a war zone in Hallsville area. Uh, I can attest, I was on the phone to Kid Tender and Anamway Emergency Management ASAP, and it was unacceptable that they did not go off. We are amazed nobody in Hallsville got hurt, all the trees on houses, cars. I lost two huge trees on my own property. Uh, my brother lives two doors down, lost a huge tree on his shop, and my son lost two trees at his house. But it's just, the, the people had no warning. And our one fallout shelter, allegedly, the door didn't, didn't get unlocked because we have a huge mobile home park. And those people could not get to shelter. So, um, let's just hope something like that doesn't happen again. But anyway, I'm here for you till December thirty-first. Uh, I am ready to be your Northern County Commissioner by pure hands, I'm not politicking, I'm just stating a fact. And, uh, even if I'm not in elected office, I will still be here if you all have any questions, because I have a lot of good relationships at the state level. Um, and, and that makes a difference. Sometimes it's not what you know to.
Well, from our side, you know, I think you've done a great job of working with us to keep this in your mind, so appreciate your service and what you've done. Nothing anybody does that, uh, a lot goes with it, you know?
I'm looking forward to that roundabout, I like roundabouts, a lot of people hate them, I like them.
Yeah, so, yeah, anyway, so, but, so thank you.
And I mentioned to the chief, but I, I hate to be the bad guy, but I do this all over the state of Missouri. Um, your electric department could do a little bit better job on streetlights. I'm the streetlight police for Columbia, MODOT, Boone County, and the state of Missouri, and I travel a lot throughout Missouri. And you all have some lights out on Singleton and twenty-two, and to me, it's a safety issue, and especially with the crashes at one twenty-four and twenty-two, that's where some of the lights were out. I know you all have your own light department, I have AMRA on feed down, I have MODOT memorized too. So, they know I apologize, I see the light out, but you all do your own, so, alright. And by the way, because the federal government would not let states put the new population numbers on your city window signs, I tried to pass a law, which got passed in the House, died in the Senate, uh, I will be putting stickers on your population with your twenty-twenty-two numbers. You certainly have your twenty-ten numbers out there, so I'm going to every city in Boone County, and they know it, MODOT knows it, I'm paying out of my own pocket, so you will have new numbers by fall on your signs, I want your real population in.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
If I'm going to die, I'm just, like, so, so late, I miss Centralia every week or something. I'm going inside right now to bring my whole street block dinner. Thank you.
Nice, yes. That moves into item five, not a resist, she does not entertain any, um, there's nothing like that.
No.
And, well, and if you are, so, if you want to, no problem, come up, state your name, your address, and put that on the phone record, it's on there, and you're welcome to.
Hi, this is Mary Ellen, uh, two oh four North Collier Street, and I am concerned about a rezoning of the property on North Jefferson. I, uh, think that multifamily dwellings and especially government subsidized like section eight, uh, would change the community out there significantly. Housing like that has created ghettos in parts of Columbia where there wasn't before. And it's right across the street from Sunset Gardens where a lot of elderly people live. And right now, they don't have private or vandalism, but you get a lot of latchkey kids and unattended children in low-income housing, that's gonna change.
Something I would recommend to you is I recommend when we're gonna have a, um, meeting, uh, with the, um, the. The ladies, um, uh, that would be a great place to come and, and to voice your opinion and concerns and bring your point, right? So, make sure that you keep up with that and that meeting, uh.
Monday.
I'm gonna be.
No, 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 listen, but it's fine if you come and have a comment, that's, uh, no problem. That would be the, the perfect place to come, so, and Monday, you test everything as well. I like, okay?
And then I also would like to see improvements for handicap accessibility with these sidewalks, where are the possible?
Yeah, we're working on sidewalks now, and it's something we've got behind on the city.
Yeah.
And we've all taken a, a little bit, and I'm gonna try to catch up on it, and, and all over town, and the world can't, so, that is a highlight of what we're trying to do. It's on the radar and exactly what we're working on right now, so. Blue pretty done, and we're, uh, uh, Stephen there, and all the work right there, and, uh, the street department, everybody has people close out, what's going on. But we pretty well call back out now, and take a pretty, take a overall, um, now, and then next year, that's.
South Road, we're trying to, so pretty well.
That's, you know, that's.
I know, that's.
Yeah, I'll talk to that real.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments?
West Street, he lives at Bruce, um, where coffee, uh, dwellings, probably. He's lived over about four years, that people come through, they're way too fast, he's actually seen their cars go airborne. I'm not talking, you should have either one, you know, going up to the fair. He thinks though, could stop signs on, we're calling, they're on, they're slowing traffic down. They also think we have a destiny walk there, because it's, it is, it's very wide enough. And if we could build a sidewalk across his front yard, it would connect the, the Columbia sidewalk to the South.
So, when it's first, we'll be on the south side of the road before you go over?
Yeah, south side.
Yeah, south side, before you go over the track, we're walking on the right, stand gold, you know, right? So, we should put a sidewalk in the house, the community sidewalk there. And he bought the house, there was a building, the building, the way it got built, is that the builder's been at that time with the sidewalk directly, so that's true. He bought the house, was the second, second or third owner of the house, but the, that, the owner should put a sidewalk in there, the sidewalk there. So, anyway, uh.
It's not gonna be a little bit, if, if it would happen, and if it does, it wouldn't happen, seem, but, uh, well, there's something, I can choose three, there's three things that could be worse.
Just, that's what my lead presence, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know how you can, if you're going work, man, you wouldn't be here, everyone, I mean, I don't know, it's a, a crack here, but, I don't know. I think you probably get these people up this, or going out, I don't know, this way, I don't know, that's very less by, nobody's might have, so. Um, that being said, what's keep in mind, and I think that it's something that I got to, uh, go forth directly, I'll take a look. Yep. Thank you for that, wow, I hear a lot of, everybody, uh, content, everybody. I'll move on down to, I, I would pick a consent agenda, consent agenda, um, I would, uh, if you approve, let's work on it, separate day on the quest, so on all of it. Uh, A, what's all the meaningness, B, private force, and C, committee, that's, uh, through these things, does the general government of safety, do you collect the support and E the action? I think. First and second is approved, consent agenda, as stated, uh, all in favor? Although, since the passes, who's the God, instead, accounts payable over four hundred fifty dollars, um, for a total, grand total of three two thousand one hundred dollars eleven ten. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, or, uh, we have, um, some, some proof.
Okay.
Second, you can't pay a little over four hundred fifty dollars, three two thousand one hundred dollars, that's a small thing. Also, next, that moves us to either, uh, the action agenda, uh, item eight, legal. The, uh, first one, will be, A, amendment to city code concerning culvers. Anything we need to talk about, I'd add, those are the things where I can provide material, and those are the things that need to be changed, and then, like, whatever you need, build a material, then buy, and share.
Do you guys want?
Well, I would, I would entertain the motion, uh, for the, uh, first read of bill number two five four five by Ty Long.
I think, you know, that, that bill number two five, that's why I was beginning, first one.
Second, and first and second, the bill number two five four five, I think here is pretty pretty much tied along, all in favor? Although.
Ordinance, change thirty dash twenty-four, raise city code, change the city of Centralia, written policy concerning, like, drainage code. I need the bill number two five four five to be the second.
Second, that first and second, bill number two five N five, I think the second, you have a title, all there, although, and, it's already placed.
Ordinance, change thirty dash twenty-four, bring the city, say, written policy, same, same. Will the bill two five four five be adopted by local?
That first and second, the bill number two five four five, adopt the local, all in favor? Although, passing, local, local.
Over the Necker, from the Necker?
Passes, uh, for the summer?
Line at nine two.
Be motion to authorize the mayor to sign next week, uh, sale agreement for the East Act, uh, the motion will do that, any question?
Do you have any questions? The chair of the president, he's back, he has a question. Bid price is originally four hundred and I go to sixty thousand dollars, after I reviewed the terms of the bid and the terms of the closing bid, I was playing it out, that the bid commit to a, yeah, a cancellation agreement. There are now even additional twenty-five thousand dollars in sales price for a transfer of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and that's your bid. So, you guys, it received a twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's handled that, don't worry.
Although, the mayor signed, said, this is the East Act.
Okay, so first and second, uh, be authorized, the mayor to sign next week, so there's a, all there, although. Be motion for the city to accept point order request. I thought, last to be, most authorized nomination of the lease term to the closing date of the East Act.
This is just to make clear, even with sale contract, this, this sale contract is not incorporating parity, we just want to make sure that one impact closes on the property. On a building, it's only, I'm just asking for a motion to make sure we have a clear record and experience, meaning by the board and the city, that obviously is not.
Order from the authority, it's in the, on closing of the East Act.
Okay.
Now, first, um, relation to lease term, although, we, and it's all in favor. Although, the past, that, the, the motion, uh, for city to accept point order request, um, that hard point request by government, um, they, uh, put that, those money from the sale of the, of the property has come in our, of the cities, and it has to say, it has to request names, that, uh, to the part, back to the part, and that put that, this, they made that request.
I'm interested in the accept point.
Second, that we accept the, uh, our legal question, all in favor? I, although, if it comes past, used to be legal, little break in the water board, this, um, point four, it, uh, would be built under two five four six, I believe. And then, uh, we talked about this one, I believe, that question of, 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 of.
Out with our, um, your water. No, so this would be, um, a one, a water thing that they want.
Yeah.
Um, maybe that, just for like two hundred dollars there, they cost more to you, for D bill.
What I'll be, I'm looking for the first read, but that.
Move to bill number two five four six, to give a resource, I tell it only.
First and second, the bill number two five four six, uh, first. Although, that's the third read.
Ordinance to have the sale of bulk water to second, twenty-six dash one eight two E, of the code, the order these things are submitted, to try to, uh, build two five four six, because the second read.
The first and second, the second read by title, all in favor? Although, that's the standard place.
Ordinance to have the sale of bulk water to second, twenty-six, yeah, one eight two E, of the order these things are submitted, to try to, uh, lead the deal, two five four six, let's be adopted, but I'll call the city.
All in favor? As we're talking, again.
Over the Necker, from the Necker?
Four.
Over the Necker?
Yeah. Bill number two five, which is passing, if you want to come to. To the old business, the old business. Not new business. Moves to item nine, mayor appointment, um, I would accept, uh, motion to, to appoint, A, B, C, D, the, the five-year term, or adjustment. Want to get a, a two-year term on three more, one thousand, three hundred, three more, one thirty, three-year term on three more, appoint Janine Rose, that would be, uh, park pool. Second, bring the second to appoint, so, stated, um, those are the differences. All in favor? Although. And that leads us to, I attend, she's administered, bumping portion package, and I'll say, we're here.
Last month was a pretty busy month, we had a lot of different things happening. We did host the fifth grade class here at City Hall, with department and the fire department. Um, rain kinda swirled, so, to cancel it, but it held off enough, so we're still able to walk around and. Um, we also held a quarterly employee lunch, um, it was a really good time to, to get together and talk to, um, those that, that do work together all the time, so we all have a good. Um, but also, I did attending L E T C tabletop meeting here in Centralia, did involve a. Um, it was very interesting to see, um, the different person, I think, they go and do, you know, who works with who and what things we looked at, and it was very informative. With Marlin and, and Danny Rush, it was informative. Um, we also conducted interviews for two positions, one here at City Hall and one in the electric department, and happy thing we did, uh, walk away without hiring two employees, so we have, you know, and we also had to. To be walking on it, so, um, Lightning Trump will be joining, uh, today again, he left. The electric department. We're looking forward to having him back up our own.
That was, was ten, eleven, you heard it.
So, last month, we, we, we're working on, we just have a, really big, there was a, giving that, I know, this is a big, very, we're working on, I'm, I'm, to, 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 you, this evening. Often, highly, on the R V, saying, let's do a charity, we love, we, we're seeing, there's currently some R Vs and retrievers, people, they, 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 they don't, they, they are, uh. They don't hear a lot of many people, residents, they're, so I just, so Tara, and it would be, we're, 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 you know, that one, that is contract that they currently have with, uh, for the, for the, we're, we're sitting here. Once they're real estate, or they, they would not, they would, they would remain in the R V part, because they, they may not be able to, take, you know, like, terminate the lease agreement right now, but move it again. Then we can basically, if they would make that, remove those pending treatments, these are, because they can't. Hopefully, that will help, on that issue, if not, rather than Tara, we're gonna be back together and make sure that the address. You, the entire.
I know, it's a matter of, we, we, it was, the crowd, for those people.
Things, yeah, things have been marking us.
Yeah, too.
Working.
That, that's, yeah, we talk about it, but those have heard what we've done, so, I think it's a lateral, that's, you know, what works well, because you don't hear anything, you think, well, no, we're doing everything all right.
Most of our issues with those, have, in, which are still standing, she's a safe.
Well, what are we doing, we tell them, I mean, can they hook them up to their house?
No, they, they have their. The orders, you won't.
One at North Island, so hook to their house, like, every night.
I would call that, that's, in my, their, but, hold it, it's gone.
It's a bus, it's a, it's a love bus, it's a love bus or whatever noise, every night.
Maybe I'm thinking.
Right behind the, uh, Union Hall.
Right behind the Union Hall.
And just at all, two hours. He's right, I believe I was over that way the last couple, three days, and it, it was, uh, the entire. I mean, nice fault in crash, but, I, 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 I thought we had an ordinance on that, because one caught fire and it was plugged to the house. I thought we came up with a, a, it says.
I thought we came over, and the ordinance said, it did not.
We have, it incorporated an odd, whatever, structure, so I would, Sarah, and Katie goes, like, occupancy permit, and then we, actually, we tell me, we're, we're, different issues. They can obtain that, you're using that as more than just a temporary permitted five day residential, where, only as, they, and so.
Yeah.
Utility, so, yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's two avenues, and we can not, you know, not, to permit, so if they don't wanna unhook themselves and move on, and we can bring, use, hearing, we start giving, uh, that to get that done, but we have several ways to address that, you know. All good.
And they come to the, from the, from the, from the permanent.
Yeah.
You know, they say, uh, family coming in, they're gonna be here. Police and everyone know, that wants to pay a lot.
He mentioned for the, for, so any construction, if there's, you know, applications, changes, like, so we talked about, I found, you know, that they, again, just, maybe, if that was to go forward, that developed, that, that, and people. Things allow people to move in, or do we feel, or verify that, they construct a per code, and, you know, they have the thing, so. So, um, where, we also have any amendments about, you know, the mobile home, but the occupancy permit is still over, like, overmarched in all of that. You cannot have a permanent residence in the city, ask them, like, it's not like rent, or, people who didn't have a health, it's often, very, becomes livable, becomes dangerous, it may no longer be eligible for, permit, because. Something that could have been occupied, ended up years ago, may fall into the district area, and no longer, but, you know.
When you're talking about the Trevor Law, right? I don't know, this law, why, how do we know, I mean, if, if they have an overarching, issue, or, 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 how do we know when, when, when they, when they expire, when it does, if it comes up?
What happened, it can't, it can't, it, 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 the city, you know, can't, can't find it. You know, we have to work the best we can, because there's members of the city, you know, the tenants, that just no longer need our apartment, and they would have to provide us with a copy of their lease.
What's relevant to me when it comes to, is, is not, uh, being a big brother, wanting to get into somebody's lives, or, or, live, follow life, if you want to protect people, to be, put in. Man versus living condition, or dangerous place, you know, and so, I hear that from people, I, I don't, I don't take much to it, because the fact is, first, what you find to, you know, ordinances that protect people, probably protect themselves, and the city, and everybody. Be well and healthy at the end of that, so. Good, well, we'll, 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 I guess, with him, I, I want to make a, we'll have to get a hold of him, we still have taxes, I guess. Maybe, well, no, we're. Okay, so, we'll have to run him down.
Oh, it was me.
Let you, let me go, sooner he's gone, it's been three months.
She's in there all the time.
Yeah, I don't see that, I mean, he, and I hope she stays, because that's, you know, but, but, I'm, I'm, it's made a difference, too, out there, I mean, with, with the activity, and, and, that, that, that's.
The last little bit, I'm, um, Tara, I'm meeting sometime July, I have four days, they are working, I'm meeting, there's two things actually, I'm working, Matthew, we should try to get a better understanding of our utility pool, infrastructure, and what the city, um. And I'm pretty in relation to the proposed, um, infrastructure project, I'm a break speed, brought up here, I'm saying, question about pole ownership, and making sure that we understand which poles are ours, which poles might be somebody else's, while we're working, asking on that. Um. Big, I've been, we've, we've verified that, and then we'll discuss it, because you can have any question about, um, yard sign.
Well, that, oh, are you, are you? Then next, the item on, uh, soil, just before.
Uh, well, Tara mentioned, the, the new, this is any part. And the police have to get into, into the grid. Um, rapidly approaching, one of my favorite, like, the year, which is audit, um, a pre-planning session with the auditors, and they will be on site, two weeks from today, five, four, three. Um, so leading up to that, there's always a, not, um, the, the request. Get it done.
So, well, three, we're going, uh, but, but, I have been, and, uh, you're the doctor, and I appreciate. You, that, you know.
We, we have something, we, 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 we need to talk about this sewer tech cleanout for R Vs out there, that is a mess.
Oh, you're talking about where the, the dump side is?
Yes, that is a mess. I'd say we put a chain across there, and go let nobody, they, they care.
I was going to ask the board if they would be interested in closing that down, if you want to, because, uh, there was talk at one point in time, that if we were to accept that triangle back there from the trailer park, turning that into a park, we don't want that next to an R V end up.
Oh.
So, if, uh.
I think it makes sense to do that, it doesn't, I mean. Doesn't get used, and.
Well, it gets used, but hopefully they're all, and, but, but not, then we take care of it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a mess.
So, why don't we put that on it for, for next, uh, meeting, and then we can, Monday, if we get it, uh, go on.
Where we at, trying to, to talk to them, or, anything on that?